The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'm going to call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Council, we have before us the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered. Any council items to be considered?
Until I get to consent.
Yes, we'll wait until... Okay, and then we'll go on to consent calendar, council or consent calendar. Melanie.
Thank you, your honor. I jumped the gun there a little bit. We would request that item number three, the joint powers agreement for the Dakota broadband, be pulled. We were notified late last week that there are some minor amendments. So we'd ask that that be pulled and be considered at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have before us consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended here? Councilmember Vaughn makes that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Second by councilmember Liefeld. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing under awarding of contracts and public hearings. A public hearing regarding to the annual municipal separate storm sewer system permit report. John, Mr. Craven from our Public Works Department is here to provide us that report. John, nice to see you again. Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor and council. The Federal Clean Water Act requires cities of our size to annually submit a permit to discharge storm water into receiving water bodies. Stormwater permit typically covers a five-year period and is intended to reduce pollutants from reaching our rivers, ponds, and lakes. Hastings submitted their first annual stormwater permit to the PCA back in 2008. As part of the permit, the city was required to address six separate areas referred to as minimum control measures. They include, the first, public education and outreach. For this, we're providing stormwater-related postings on Facebook, Rivertown newsletters, and city website. And we participated in events such as Arbor Day, Spring Cleanup Day, and Blue Thumb Rain Garden Program. Second, public participation and involvement. We create an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, such as what we're formally doing here today at the public hearing. And we mailed an electronic survey for the 2040 Water Comp Plan, asking for residents' level of concern and interest in water quality issues. Number three, illicit discharge detection and elimination. We maintain our storm sewer mapping system to better understand the system and are boots on the ground for identifying and calling into the PCA any emergency non-stormwater-related discharge to the system. Four, construction site stormwater runoff control. During development plan reviews, we enforce stormwater ordinance regulations consistent with the PCA and the watershed, and follow up to make sure the construction sites are tidy and tidy as possible during the construction. Number five, post-construction BMPs. Once the development is completed, we ensure the installed water quality infrastructure has a long-term maintenance agreement in place to make sure it works for the years to come. Of course, this is vetted out during the plan review process. And number six, the pollution prevention for city operations. The question is, how are we, the city, managing our own system, sweeping streets, inspecting areas containing hazardous material, and conducting annual inspections of our sump manholes, flare-in sections, and ponds? Lastly, the PCA is currently drafting a revised permit slated to come out in 2018. Additional requirements may be included to further reduce pollutants within stormwater runoff. Staff will review these requirements and update the SWP in 2019. Presently, we are being told no significant changes are going to be made or proposed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. Appreciate that report. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to open the public hearing. The public hearing is open to anyone who would like to comment on the annual municipal separate storm sewer system permit report. Anyone wish to comment on that? It's a public hearing. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counselors, any comments or questions at this point? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, your honor. Hi, good evening. I had a question in regards to street sweeping. And so I'm sorry if this sounds too technical, but I was specifically wondering if the city actually swept Vermillion Street down Highway 61, where that was MINDAT's responsibility.
Yep, that's a good question. That is MINDAT right-of-way, so that's MINDAT's responsibility. Typically, we work with them and sweep, work with them for traffic control, and we come through and sweep it, but it's in coordination with MINDAT.
I'm sorry, so say that again, so the city does sweep it?
It's MINDAT's jurisdiction, so they're in responsibility for actually coming through and sweeping it, but they work with us to sweep it. But they're responsible to jump-start that process. And usually, it's done once or twice a year.
Okay. And so if the city chose to sweep it more, it would be the Public Works Department that would have to make that consideration. And I ask because, councilmember Liefeld and myself, we spent some time pulling weeds on Vermillion Street, and it was easy to notice that one of the contributing factors is that the road isn't being swept enough because there was clearly sediment is running off, you know, the land into the street there, and then it's actually catching in a lot of the cracks and crevices that are along the roadway there. And that's where a lot of the weeds were actually growing, particularly up against the median itself. And then furthermore, we couldn't help but notice that drains were very clogged. Some of them, you know, like I was tempted to reach in there and try to dig it out and, you know, throw it up on the road because, you know, it was like that clogged, and I couldn't even imagine that a street sweeper would do any good in that instance. And so I was just curious to, what's the due diligence that's required? It sounds to me as if they're just doing the very minimum, if they're only coming through once over the course of the year. Because I know, I see the, I love it when I see the streets we ever go by my house on Tyler Street a couple of times during the fall, and then in the spring they come through again. And so, um, once just seems pretty low.
Yes, that does seem low. I know this particular quarter had a lot of discussion in the past. I can bring this back to the table. Like I said, ultimately, it's MINDAT right-of-way and MINDAT's responsibility to increase if they need to, but we can take that feedback back.
Feedback to MINDAT or back to...
MINDAT and in-house as well, and we can have a discussion on that, start the conversation on that.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Liefeld.
Thank you, your honor. You know, John, thank you. It was interesting because I was able to attend the event not too long ago down at the river and played a game where inside water was different items, and I had to guess what was in the water. That was disgusting. All of the things that end up in the water. And to not beat a dead horse with councilmember Foltz, we do a fantastic job on our city streets. I've seen the sweeper go by my house regularly. I am concerned with councilmember Foltz regarding, I did pull out into separate drains enough soil, and I put it up on the median, you know, I did pull out enough soil. There wouldn't be runoff there. The water's not going to get into the drains. So then it does become our problem, I think, because with this, it is part of our, I believe it then becomes part of our SWPPP or whatever it is. So I appreciate your presenting this to us, but would like to echo that, maybe we need to get that a little bit more on our radar for something to take care of.
Sure. I hear you a lot, Claire. So thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, but I appreciate your time, John.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other further comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, John. Appreciate the report.
Thanks.
Next, we have community development. We have before us tonight a variance request, a setback in construction of a new garage. Council, I caution you, this will take six out of seven votes to approve since it is a variance. John, welcome to the meeting. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, I will have a image of the report and some of the items up momentarily here. The machine went to sleep on me. But before us tonight, we have two actions related to a property. A variance request for a portion of it for the construction of a garage, and also another original Hastings design standard review. So this property is located at 317 West Third Street, and there's differing requirements for the votes. For granting a variance, as the mayor pointed out, we do need a supermajority of six of seven for the OHDS review. It is a simple majority on that one. So what they're proposing to do is, we can show the structure here, 317 West Third Street. Behind there, they're looking to put a detached garage. The issue you have is here. It's a very narrow lot. The lot itself does not meet our minimum width requirements and is only about 36 feet wide. What they're planning to do is to build a detached garage in the back off the alley. Unfortunately, they would need to be able, they have to be able to set the garage back at least 20 feet from the alley, placing it in the middle of their backyard. Typically, what happens in this type of situation is, we will have it as a side-loading garage in this circumstance, so cars could come in, and then they could be located near the alley property line. But in this case, at 36 feet of width, they simply don't have the room. If this was to be constructed per our code, as you can see here in red, it would basically take up the usable backyard. By pushing it a little bit further back, it creates an area of more usable backyard for the applicant to enjoy there. So that's the reason behind the variance, reason for our support of the variance itself. The planning commission did review this at their meeting on November 13th, did recommend approval of this with limited discussion, the variance as well as the OHDS review. Notification did occur on the property to all residents within 350 feet of the property, and we have not had any comments back on that. So within your report itself, we have a resolution for the variance itself with a rationale behind it, as well as the OHDS review. Now, looking at the original standards review district on this, this is the back of the house here. Let's get a better view of it. This is what the garage would look like. This is the house with the variance request here. This stuff that you see right here is not on the property. This is on an adjacent house and a different matter that we're dealing with at the present. So just wanted to point that out right now, that this would be back here. But as you can see, it's a pretty narrow area in the back of the property. The garage itself would match the color of the house that's there presently white. It would have some narrower siding that would be better suited for the original Hastings Design Standards District and would meet the qualifications for that. So again, we are recommending approval of both the variance request and the original Hastings Design Standard Review for this property. We do have representatives for the applicant, Danny Milligan, here tonight if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, John. Council, this item is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, your honor. John, I just have a question. What's the 20 feet, what's the purpose of the 20 feet? And what are we choosing to ignore if we don't go with that?
Sure. The 20-foot setback, councilmember, would be, imagine this drive, this garage door here facing the alley, this would provide enough room for a car to be parked in front of it. And so, one option that people could do if they have a wider property is turn the garage 90 degrees so that it becomes a side-loading garage, and then they could put it at the property line, five feet off. But in this situation, due to the width of the lot, they're unable to do that.
Thank you, your honor. So there is no safety issues or anything? This is just a, you know, you can't park in your driveway kind of thing? Is that...
Right, right. It provides another parking space there by putting it back 20 feet, correct?
Councilmember Balsanik.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by councilmember Brox. That motion is before the body. Is there more discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Where's mine? Okay. Next, we have Morgan Hill from our Economic Development Coordinator, who is our Economic Development Coordinator. And I see Kristi is here from the Chamber of Commerce. We're going to talk a little bit about an update on the Target closing situation. Thank you, Morgan, for being here and updating us on this important issue.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. So since Target's announcement to close the Hastings store, city staff, as well as the Hastings Chamber, has been in communication with representatives from Target. Last week, we had the opportunity to speak with individuals from both government relations and corporate real estate in order to better understand what goes on in the decision-making process for store closures and also discuss the next steps, so we can prepare for the impact of this closure and the opportunity that it presents. We've also been in communication with the cities of Austin and New Ulm, who have, in the last few years, had their Targets closed, to better understand their experience, the impact to their community, the communications that they had with Target, as well as strategies that they have taken for development of the property. The site is currently Zoned C4 and guided for commercial. We believe the current zoning is in line with the highest and best use of the property as it allows for any commercial use, including both retail and office. While the zoning is flexible, if someone were to come in and request a change in use, we would be open to consideration. Our role, long-term, is to remain flexible to reuse and redevelopment properties that are presented for the site. As we move forward in this process, communication is essential with Target, with the Chamber, and with the development community overall. We want to ensure that flexibility and adaptability are top of mind when we're presented with opportunities for this site. And like any other property in the community, we'll continue to work with the property owners, our development partners, and the community to find the best fit and ensure long-term success for the community and that site.
Okay. Thank you, Morgan. Let's open that up for discussion. Counselors, do you have any questions? Councilmember Balsanik.
Thank you, your honor. With all of the news reports that were out in the papers, I recall reading something about Target going in a direction to create, I think what they called mini-Targets. Have we talked to them about that, whereby they could, you know, do a mini-target and then perhaps lease out the remaining portion of the building?
We haven't. But in our discussion that we had, that wasn't brought up, but that's absolutely something that we can talk to them about.
Yeah, I would encourage you to do that, to follow up on that. The report that I read said that this was a major move they were making, and just in the next year, they're planning on opening, I believe the number was something like 32 And, you know, perhaps that might be some way to keep them in the community. The second question I have is, I am aware of a, it's either an electronic petition or an actual petition that is going around with signatures. And the last I heard from my daughter, who is one of the main organizers of this, that they had something like 2,000 signatures on it. Does the corporation pay any attention to that kind of, that kind of a request at all?
I guess I can't say for sure. I know in our discussions, they had said that the decision wasn't made lightly, and they do, you know, they understand the impact that it can have. But this store, they said, presented challenges for the last few years, and financial challenges is what they said.
Yeah, and I saw that too, that they said, you know, that there was declining revenue, you know, coming in. But they were not specific as to, you know, how much it was declining. Is the store declining at more than what other declining stores are? Are we marginal? Are we, are we in an area where, you know, it's something, something could be looked at and said, "Well, it's not like the bottom fell out of the Hastings Target." I would like to see from them, I mean, they are a public corporation. I'd like to see from them specifically how much per year there has been a reduction in dollars and percentages in terms of the profit margin. I think Target operates at about a 3% to 4% profit margin. And so, are they at a 1% profit? Are they at a minus 2% on the profit end of it? Exactly what? I would, I would like to know. I call it putting their feet to the fire. You know, they sit up there in their tower on Nicolet Mall, and they make these decisions, and they don't, you know, take into account what, you know, what the ramifications are for a community. And so, you know, for them to say, "Well, you know, sales are declining," I would like to know exactly, you know, what is going on with that.
Okay. I can present that question to them, for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I, you know, again, I would encourage people to, you know, look for that petition to sign. And it was kind of my hope, I put something out on Facebook, that we should start a buying campaign and buy out the store between now and the 1st of February. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, your honor. Morgan, did they talk about, do we know, do they own the building?
They do.
So they own the whole property? And are they open to selling it? Are they going to rent it, lease it? Did they share any of that, of what they plan to do?
From what I understand, it will be listed for sale after everything's closed down in February. And then, I told them I'd like to be in contact with them throughout that process, in case they have any prospects, we have any prospects, just to work together very closely on that. But that they wouldn't be listing it, you know, until the beginning of the next year.
So they would list it after the 1st of the year, of this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, of 2018. So like January, February.
And, which brings me to the question, I mean, I think I sent it to Milligan. My biggest concern, it's a gateway, we need to make sure it's kept up. I'd be curious if they take the Target emblem down, or is it still going to look like a Target that folded up? Or is it going to look like an empty building that's ready for someone else to rent or lease?
So, sorry to interrupt you. I did talk to New Ulm and Austin, and I know Kristi from the Chamber did as well, and they said that their vacant buildings were very well-maintained. They did give Target a lot of credit for that. As far as taking the sign down, I guess I'm not sure how exactly it looks, but they said the entire property is very well-maintained.
I think one of the things that I, of all timing, were in our comp plan, I would ask that we really look at, how much inventory do we have of C4? Do we have too much inventory? Is this too big of a piece of a property for one owner? And that's why I ask, are they looking at the renting or leasing? Would they, I'm assuming that through a process could come to us and maybe break it up into different pieces. I would encourage us to keep looking at that as, yes, it's a loss for the city, but what's the next plan for it? Do we need that big of a property and inventory? I know John and I talked about, do we have too much commercial inventory? Do we have enough employees to fill these things? So I think we need to keep an eye on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brox.
As an avid Target shopper, who's probably spent half my paycheck there for the last 10 years, I'm also sad that they're leaving. But I also am wondering if we have any way to, if the property stays empty for a certain period of time, and there's nothing in it, do we have any way to tell them, like, they need to clear the building, knock down the building, or is it truly just we have to wait for them to do something with the property?
I believe that because they own it, that we kind of have to wait for the process to move forward, unless it becomes, you know, very unkept or hazardous or anything like that. I think we just have to wait for the market to play out.
I've heard people talk about our Walmart building that we had in the south of Hastings when the new Walmart went in, and how long that stayed empty and vacant. And I think people, you know, you have a new event, it kind of triggers old previous memories. I think a lot of people are thinking of that situation because it did stay empty for about 10 years, and is finally filled. But hopefully, I'm optimistic that we'll see it filled a lot sooner. And if there's anything we can do to help in that, please let us know.
Thank you.
Councilmember Liefeld.
Thank you, your honor. Hi, Morgan. So I know everyone's been in contact with Target. I have a couple of just kind of Facebook-type questions, and the questions I've been getting from my friends and people that I know. So over the years that Target's been there, I've heard rumors that some of the decisions for them to not do certain things, such as pharmacy, to go bigger grocery, was an effort to help maintain our community. I don't know if this is true, and I don't know if this came up in your conversations, which is why I'm asking. That I was told some time ago, they chose not to do pharmacy because they didn't want to compete with the local pharmacies. I heard the same thing not more than a few years ago regarding grocery. Is that actually true? I mean, that these were decisions they made to kind of keep this small-town feel? Did this, is this something that, I don't want to say it backfired, but I'd really like the community to understand where these decisions were coming from.
As far as I know, the city was never contacted by Target for any of these decisions that they made. I guess I've only been here for almost 12 months, so, but as far as the conversations that I know, Target never contacted us for any changes or any updates or anything like that.
That answers my question. Thanks, Morgan.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, your honor. Morgan, just so that we have an understanding of, I mean, what has been done to, you know, I guess, see what can be done to keep them here, right? I mean, it's a business decision. It's understandable that they, you know, do what is right for their business. But in an open, public format, it would probably be a good idea to explain to the citizens of this town, what have we done? Not just to ensure that that space is well-used, long-term, well-kept, and so forth, but that we've communicated with them in effort to see if there is a way to keep them here.
So in our conversation last week, and the Chamber of Commerce was with us as well, we did let them know about recent investments in our community and, you know, investments that are to come in our community as well, and we did present them with that. The conversation was kept very surface with them, their responses to us, but, you know, there is always follow-up conversations. The questions that I have tonight, too, I can reach out.
Well, just, councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, thank you, your honor. I know I have the floor already, but do we know what the property tax ramifications are between an open Target and a closed building? What do we stand to lose financially in terms of our property taxes? Can anybody give us a bit of an estimate on that?
I guess I don't...
Or does the tax stay the same whether they're open or closed?
I think it's based on the taxable value of the building, so I don't think there would be a change in that. Sales tax change certainly, but property tax I would anticipate, provided they maintain the building.
Okay, thank you.
For those at home who's listening, our distinguished Community Development Director just gave an answer, and it might have been off mic, but the answer was that whether there's retail in there or not, it's the value of the building that the property tax is based on, so we're not anticipating much changes in the property tax value of it. Further discussion? I will just say that, first of all, I had an opportunity to talk to some of the Target folks last week as well, and a lot of the sentiment that we set here in this council, I conveyed to them, that they're a valued business in our community, that we did not want them to go. I did not want to see this situation. However, I did tell many other folks who contacted me that, you know, we're a bigger community than just one retailer. And even though this was an important retailer in our city, we'll, you know, we will grow from this, we will learn from this, and we will market that property along with Target to see what we can do in the future. But, you know, for those who think that everybody's leaving town, we've had a lot of businesses come into this community in the last few years. I think John gives a community development report every now and then. We've seen a lot of economic activity. In downtown alone, we've seen an investment of art space and the Riverfront Renaissance that would equal about 20 million. We're looking at another 20 million investment with the Hudson Confluence. Alina has expanded the hospital and the new clinic, which was a $60 million, $63 million investment in our community. A lot of people, besides just us, believe in this community, and we're going to continue to grow and to prosper. And whether Target wants to come with us or not, we're going to continue to move forward. And we certainly hope that our outreach with Target, that, Joe, that's a great idea, let's talk about a mini-Target. But regardless, we're going to continue our efforts to grow our economic base. Okay? So, thank you, Morgan, for your presentation. I also want to acknowledge that Kristi's here, the... I also want to acknowledge that Christie's here, the President of the Hastings Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to the Chamber. I know they've done a lot of legwork, working with Morgan and our city staff. Uh, they've also had discussions with Target, uh, talking about the, along with our staff, about the employees and their future there, uh, and, uh, some suggestions about how we can move forward with the employee base at Target. Thank you, Christie, and your group, uh, done a wonderful work on this as well. So we appreciate the efforts of the Chamber of Commerce in this. Okay? Uh, next, council, we have, uh, comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience this evening? Well, we have one from our distinguished, uh, Public Works Director. Nick, come on up. Welcome to the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Uh, little impromptu here. I don't usually get up at this point in the meeting, but I wanted to share some positive news, uh, with you. I just came back from the, uh, American Public Works Association Fall Conference for a Minnesota chapter late last week where I was honored to accept an award from the organization on behalf of the city for our accomplishments with the Riverfront Renaissance project these last three years. So I wanted to parade that around a little bit. You know, of course, we get a lot of enjoyment and fulfillment from seeing things materialize and folks using the, all the great features that we've built. You know, that always brings a smile to...
What category was that in, Nick? What category? Did they have a general category or...
Nothing in particular. It's just for Project of the Year.
Project of the Year.
From the, uh, Minnesota chapter.
Excellent.
Um, but it's always nice to, to get hardware too. So we'll find a, a prominent place to display this and, uh, uh, you know, something we can all be proud of. Took a lot of work from the community, from staff, uh, our contractor, our consultant, all the way up and down. And, uh, you know, this is just, uh, icing on the cake, these sorts of things. So I'll pass it around so you can see it, but I wanted to, to not, uh, let the meeting go without showing that off, so...
Thank you. Congratulate, uh, you and your staff and, uh, and all the staff that worked hard and the leadership of this council to, uh, forge ahead with that project. And it is a huge success, so it's nice to be recognized for it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, council, uh, announcements. We have announcements. Councilmember Folch.
Thank you, Your Honor. It wasn't an announcement, um, more kind of a unfinished business. I wanted to ask, uh, for follow-up. On September tenth, at that council meeting, there was, uh, on the consent agenda, there was a solar collateral agreement, um, in regards to the solar panels that were going to be placed on top of the fire station. And I know that it was, uh, polled. We weren't, uh, really, uh, told if and when it was going to come back for consideration. But I did have KDWA call me the next day, um, in that Chris Jenkins was preparing a report, uh, for the council. And so it's been a month, and I was curious as to, uh, when it is that we can anticipate that that's coming back to the council.
No?
Sure, Your Honor and council. That, Adam, actually, um, we worked with the, uh, a company called Apex, um, for about a year on the study for that. And unfortunately, the, the, the timeline and their timeline has expired. So we will be bringing it, something back to the council early part of twenty-eighteen to talk about sustainability goals. So that project will not be moving forward as originally envisioned.
Okay. All right. Is there any, councilmember Folch?
Your Honor, thank you. Just in follow-up then, um, if, if, I'm excited that you announced that we're going to begin to have, uh, worksheets ea- worksheets, workshops each month, um, prior to a council meeting. And so I would really, um, like to ask that at one of those workshops, we have a discussion about what our, uh, sustainability goals are and probably, um, more specifically in regards to energy because sustainability is a pretty broad spectrum of various issues. And so sometimes you have to, you know, walk before you can run. And so that's kind of an easy place to start. And, um, so, because we, we did have, you know, for consideration, the solar garden subscription, and now there's this, and in both instances, we ran out of time. And, uh, the council seems to, uh, not have clarity as to what the direction is that we should be taking. And so I would really like to ask that we have a serious conversation and that we place that at the beginning of the calendar year on one of the agendas.
Sure, we can do that. Yep. And, uh, we have until, uh, Wednesday before the third meeting or the second meeting in J- uh, January, excuse me. So duly noted. And we'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Councilmember Vaughn?
Just that, uh, the next Red Rock meeting is November thirtieth, and that's at Newport at four-thirty.
All right. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, I have a few announcements. Uh, Hedra has, uh, meetings been rescheduled, and, uh, Hedra will be meeting, uh, tomorrow, Tuesday, November twenty-first, at six-thirty here at City Hall. So our count, our, uh, members who sit here on that, uh, Hedra, there's councilmember Balsanik and councilmember Vaughn. So you have another meeting tomorrow night. Hooray! So, uh, tomorrow, uh, the HPC was to meet for Tuesday, November twenty-first. However, that has been canceled, so no HPC meeting tomorrow. A reminder, of course, I don't think a lot of people need reminding, but, uh, this Thursday is, uh, Thanksgiving Day. And so city offices will be closed this Thursday, November twenty-second, and Friday, November twenty-third. And let me take this opportunity to wish the community a very happy and safe, uh, Thanksgiving on behalf of the council. Um, on Monday, November twenty-seventh, is the next Planning Commission that will be meeting here at City Hall. And I want to make this announcement that on Tuesday, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at seven PM, the City Council will hold a closed-door meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at seven PM in the council chambers at City Hall. This is in accordance with the Minnesota Open Meeting Laws, uh, Minnesota Statute, uh, thirteen D point oh-five subdivision two B, and that this meeting will be closed. The grounds for closing the meeting are for the preliminary consideration by the City Council of allegations or charges against an individual subject to its authority. So, uh, the meeting, uh, closed-door meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at seven PM. On Monday, December fourth, at seven PM, will be the Hastings City Council's next scheduled meeting. And also, I'd like to encourage those who are in attendance here and those who are watching at home that we have openings, uh, for our commissions, our citizens' commissions, like Parks Commission, Planning Commission, um, Public Safety Advisory Commission. So anyone there who would be interested in serving their community, we'd love to have you. Come down to City Hall or go online to our website and apply for a commission, uh, position. Uh, council, we have no other business before this body. Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor.
I guess we do have more business before this body.
Here I come again. Uh, if I'm correct, we have an Operations Committee meeting on the fourth of December at five-thirty PM prior to the City Council meeting.
That is confirmed. Operations Committee on December fourth.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, seeing no other business before this, uh, council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Brox makes that motion to adjourn. Second, my councilmember, uh, Folch. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.